Again, we will continue to implement our safety guidelines and protocols recommended by the CDC and Department of Health, and we will adjust accordingly to our community COVID-19 transmission and vaccination rate. Again, we will communicate with all families in the community through our school websites, social media platforms, and other communication tools, including our school messenger and talking points. Instructionally, last week, our summer school ended with approximately 700 students who successfully completed the four-week program. Our attending rate was approximately 80% district-wide, inclusive of our high school credit recovery and our accelerated programs. We are very much looking forward to welcoming back all our students and staff for in-person instruction in September. The first day for teachers and support staff is scheduled for September 2nd, followed by a day of professional development, talk being taken place on September 3rd. The first day for students is scheduled for September 8th. Our bus transportation and our student meals will return to normal operations. Again, our goal this year, our overarching goal this year is to meet students where they are, in their learning, and propel them forward with purposeful instruction that address their academic and social-emotional needs. To close, we are committed to honoring the identities of our students. We serve and we err reducing the predictability of who succeeds and who fails. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. There's a motion to accept the superintendent's report. Is there a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seeland. Mr. Shakaitis. Mrs. Solis. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Sevita. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item number five, the Facilities Committee report. Mr. Edward Spencer, chairperson.
Yes, Mr. President, the Facilities Committee did not meet this month. We will report out any problems.
Editor, mic on.
Mr. President, the Facilities Committee did not meet this month. We will report out next month.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. The Athletic Committee report. Ms. Sevita, give your report.
Good evening, everyone. I do have a couple of updates about the Athletic Committee. Teams have been working out all summer following strict COVID guidelines and will continue to do so throughout the fall season. We have start dates for football and girls tennis, which started actually August 9th, as well as all of those sports started yesterday. So we have new coaches for the boys' basketball, the girls' basketball, and homecoming, which I hope that the public will go in following the guidelines that we have set up, will be on October 1st, and that will be versus Edison High School. And we're following up with some meetings under stadium light and gym floor. So that's all I have to say.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much.
We do have a July bank reconciliation to approve.
We got a motion. Is there a motion to accept the bank reconciliation from the Athletic Committee? Is there a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Mr. Ortiz. Mrs. Seeland. Mr. Shakaitis. Mrs. Solis. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Sevita. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, the Curriculum Policy Committee report. Mrs. Emira Kyle Seeland, chairperson.
The Curriculum Policy Committee did meet last week, and we started out having a brief meeting, but got sidetracked. We covered quite a bit of information, but I won't bore you with all the details. We had a presentation by Ms. Hale. She presented a framework of core components for multi-tiered levels of support in academics to the social-emotional needs that would promote student achievement and success. This new framework consists of three tiers that will support our learners through core instructional programs and interventions by using multiple sources of data to drive decisions. Tier one focuses on whole group instruction. Tier two on small group instruction. And tier three is individualized instruction. We're going to implement this multi-tier system approach for support, starting with the new school year in September. Also, we are going to implement an extended school day, as well as tutoring services using our own district staff. Extended school day will be in-person via morning and or afternoon sessions with extra support for our English learners and students with disabilities. Tutoring services will be virtual during the evening hours of the day. Both programs will be available three days a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. More information will be available on our district website, as well as the individual school websites. So this will be implemented at all levels. We reviewed a new curriculum, and this included Algebra I for students with interrupted formal education. This used to be called our New Commerce Program at the high school level to meet our students' needs, strengthen their prerequisite skills on linear equations, inequalities, and systems. We also reviewed a new curriculum for computer music and production, music theory and composition for grades six through eight. This aligns to new standards and exposes students to elements of music via computer Revised curriculum was presented for sculpture, financial literacy, and PTECH professional learning skills to align to new standards, as well as update the content. We reviewed the list of resolutions, and these include curriculum updates, as well as annual renewals of the instructional programs, such as Tools of the Mind in pre-K and kindergarten, donations, professional development. All resolutions we recommended are included in the consent agenda. And the policies and regulations we reviewed included new policies for gender transition for staff, and the Road Forward COVID-19 Health and Safety. The new policy, the Road Forward, addresses the provisions of the New Jersey Department of Education. Recently released the Road Forward Health and Safety Guidance for the 2021 through 2022 school year, and provides school districts with the framework to develop reopening plans for the 2021-22 school year. And we have, as Dr. Johnson indicated, we are constantly reviewing, updating that plan. And our plan is consistent with all appropriate guidelines. Of the policies that we reviewed, by-laws and policies, regulations, these revised, career and technical education. School districts ought to determine a career and technical education program offered to their students. And a few years ago, we began developing more career and technical choices. A revised policy for school district travel, which is, I believe we do this annually, is revised. The board establishes an annual maximum amount per employee for regular business travel, not requiring prior board approval. And we recommend that all the new policies and the revisions of existing policies be accepted on first reading tonight. And that concludes my report.
Ms. Seeland, is the suit accepted? Is it accepted, General?
Yes. There is a little bit down there.
Item number eight. Item number eight, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey report. Couple things I'd like to report. One, that because most district students are going back, the transportation that the district provides is filling up again, getting back to 2019 levels. In addition, our preparation for our special students has been great, and our enrollments are getting back to normal at the commission. But also, I'm pleased to report, there's a new hotel in New Brunswick, the Home Two, which is over near me in the Rutgers Village section, and I connected them with the commission's conference center. So they don't have a conference center, but that relationship is a good one, and could potentially provide some opportunities for our students and just another space for us to utilize. So that's actually good news with the commission. Item number nine, the President's report. I wasn't going to talk about this, but I think it's an important lesson for young people. As some of you know, I had a white Prius, 2007 Prius, and I was in Homedale, and I was parked with my blinker light on, about to go left, and a young man, who was the age of some of our high school students, a New Brunswick high school student, was going about 50 miles an hour on a wide open road on his phone, and slammed in the back of my car, which drove me across the way into the embankment. Had a truck coming, I'm sure they wouldn't be sitting here. And I mentioned this, one, I'm just thankful to God that I'm alive, but two, you know, this is the cancer on society. This phone, and my daughter's here, and she knows I talk about this, just distracts students from focusing, distracts students from studying. And so I encourage all of you who are parents, or guardians, or teachers, to understand that music is great, you know, that entertainment's great, TikTok's wonderful at the right time. But the more I interact with students, the more I see how these phones are distracting them from their academic achievement, from doing well. And I love my phone, I use it for business, but it's designed, if you look at the social, was it the social network? What's that? The social network where they talk about the addictive measures that Silicon Valley does on his phone. So I encourage all of you for vigilance to save lives, to make sure that phones are, in fact, I'm thinking about, you know, investing in some company that develops a system and cars that turn phones off. You can't use phones when you're driving, but literally, I would not be here, you know, but for the grace of God. So it's important for us to understand that this is no joke, that these phones are causing a lot of problems for our students, for others. So I encourage you, I would be irresponsible if I didn't say something about this, because it is, it really is a major, major problem on society. So with that, we move to item number 10 before the consent agenda. Are there public comments?
Dr. Caldwell, may I just add to your report? First of all, I did have an opportunity to see your car. It looks like there were no backseats left completely, and I'm just happy to know that you're okay. I'm sure you're still sore, at least you're here today. What I do want to add to, and I would be remiss in speaking in my opening, until I saw a young lady sitting in an audience, and I believe the young lady is in an audience. Last week, if you don't know, if you read the tab into our, one of our students happened to be walking on Eastern Avenue and saw, I believe, a home on fire, and through her quick actions, she was able to notify the police. This fire dispelled about eight Rutgers students, but it was just a community service, and we're thought to move quickly and to inform. And I just wonder if that's actually Caldwell sitting in the audience, I don't know, raise your hand? Okay. Just want to say thank you so much for being a community leader and doing the right thing. You make us proud and continue to trail base. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, and would be remiss if we didn't publicly thank Chuck McDonald for sharing that story and tap into it. It's wonderful you can stay on top of the news and just appreciate you and your publication for reporting the news that relates to the city very well. So thank you. Thank you very much. Again, item number 10, the public comments. Are there public comments, Mr. General?
Yes, Dr. Caldwell, the first participant of our microphone is Linda Stork.
Good evening. Good evening. Okay, I've been introduced already. I, first of all, I had a question about Resolution Z for the HBA system at Lincoln and Livingston. Are they in fact already installed, or will they be installed before the start of school?
Fred?
Thank you.
Rich?
The majority, all of the HBA systems are installed in the classrooms. They're still working on the gymnasiums and the bigger spaces.
Okay, but all students as of now in their classrooms would have their condition?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So last time I brought up some of the research I had done about school size, and it not being a good idea to build an elementary school of 1,100 students, case in point. And I was accused of pulling stuff off the Internet and not knowing how research worked. So I did send an email to the president of the board with a link to some of the research I had quoted, and asked him to know what was wrong with it, because I didn't just pull something off the Internet. It's from the Eric database, and it's all peer-reviewed, approved journals, and asking for a link in return to the studies that would show, as I was told, that I could be pointed in the right direction, of the studies that show it's actually better to have these huge schools. I couldn't find any research like that. I did find some studies that were not conclusive, because of course, there's a lot of other factors involved, and especially when they only do small and large. Well, in some rural areas, the schools are so small, you have to get to a certain economy and scale. If you're not big enough to have like a separate teacher for each grade, for example, that may not work out so well. But in general, the majority of all the studies I could find pointed towards smaller being better, and especially for lower socioeconomic level children. So this one that I'm going to quote tonight, I was careful to, I'll have to, excuse me, I could not get my printer to talk to my computer, but just so you know, this is Pamela Sodda Julie, we own, John R. Slate did this research, and it was post-reviewed, accepted, and endorsed by the National Council of Professors of Educational Administration, HNCDA. And I think you guys might be familiar with that organization. So I'm not just pulling this from a random Facebook post. This is actual research. As I said, some of the studies are not conclusive, but they did look at, in general, elementary school size and student performance, conceptual analysis. Of the studies that were conclusive, most of them came in heavily for smaller schools. And it's important to understand, too, when they're, just like there's an economy of scale on the lower side, when they talk about larger schools, they're not even talking about 1,100. They're talking about 800. That's what, that was, you know, considered to be a large school. In fact, I could only find two schools in all of New Jersey that had 1,100 students, elementary schools. I mean, one of them fairly successful, actually, but it's, again, a middle class, majority white, and overwhelming the white and Asian student, a very middle class. The school of 1,100 that has similar demographics to us is, let's just say, not a success story. That does not work out. So they did look specifically at optimal school size, and the different researchers that looked specifically at that, this is optimal school size for elementary schools. A lot of the research was done for...
Ms. Stork, I'm sorry to interrupt, but five minutes is tough.
Oh, okay. I can tell you, I guess.
And I'll give you the benefit of the response, as I said, it affects us. So I have, your email was in spam, so I have your email right here. And so it says it seemed to reduce, but there are other factors that affect it. The elementary, what is elementary secondary, the number of grades in the building, rural versus urban, competences versus special purpose. So my point to you is that you can't come here and say universally it says this, because the research, what you sent me shows that it's not universally correct. It seemed to do that. So thank you for your time.
Clearly, you're not reading the whole article, because you said you just saw it.
Yeah, I just, I just saw it. I'm not reading. Thank you very much, Ms. Stork.
For lower socioeconomic level schools?
Could we have the next speaker, please?
The evidence was clear. Read the rest of the article, please.
Read your research. It's not clear in the research you sent. It's not clear at all? Who's next? Rich?
Ms. Dale.
Dr. Caldwell, the next speaker is Ms. Danielle Moore.
Hi, yes, my name is Danielle Moore. First, I would like to start off by saying I do thank the Board of Education and the state once again for the pandemic EDP cards, for especially for people who do not require qualified for food stamps. I have to say, I'm very shocked to have not to receive over the food stamps, plenty of families where I do believe that they will appreciate it, because it was twice as much this time as it was last. Last year, I thought they made a mistake, but I will say thank you, especially to one who cannot qualify for, what a big helping to our students. Thank you. I would like to also speak, if you could tell me, is Sergeant, Sergeant Lugo or Lieutenant Lugo, is he the husband of the principal of the high school here or middle school? The officer that used to work in the auditorium? Is there a relationship?
You know, we don't comment on personnel issues.
Well, due to where I'm going to speak on it, due to where this is a situation in New Brunswick, I say it's too much love connection to different departments, where I don't think they take it seriously. And like I said, I'm glad you really spoke on somebody who's doing something good, where how a lot of times you think I'm an enemy, because I'm speaking up, due to where I have a personal, where I have special visits, and I proved it to the city council as well, and the county, plenty of times, in which where you never did take me seriously. But please, like I said, and please, make sure Sergeant Lugo, Lieutenant Lugo, give you the police report of every situation since we've been here for this last meeting, of how many robberies, assaults, statutes, and car accidents next to 50 Jersey Avenue. Or please, just take the time to go under my shade with Facebook, to look at the evidence, and you never want to talk to me, and let me spend you the evidence, where you're saying everything is going to work out right? Like I said, it's not going to work out right until New Brunswick Police Department does their job, and very sad, where, like I said, you do not take the time to do your research. Please, like I said, what, compared to how much liquor is being left over there, how many people are still being picked up over there since then? The city council required that to a liquor store now, paying over $143,000 or more for that park, thinking that it was going to clean up the neighborhood? Wow, like I said, you ride by there, you'll see how many boxes of liquor is over there. It's not an area for a school. And for you to tell somebody to do research, I think it's time that you do your research and take the time to go over there and read every police report that is going on over there, how many robberies, assaults, statutes, picking up with the drugs. And I will speak on Lugo, wow, what an evil officer he is, to really think I'm a bad person, and I've known him ever since I was a child in school, and just like, honey, if you try to make it look I'm the evil one, well, like I said, I'm really showing you the vision, what the Lord is sending me, that what, something is not right. And due to where instead of when the shooting of July 29th, that joy's come apart, wow, made him wonder, talking to me with the detective that worked with the school here, thinking I was talking about the case, where what, instead of dying four children that were ready to go toward the crime scene, he worried about me talking to the detectives, where I think Mr. James Hill retired, where he died with four kids to the next block to go to play state in Livingston Avenue. Why do you always try to make me the evil, evil one? Well, like I said, I'm only showing you what I see. And like I said, all I was saying was to the detectives, wow, thank you, Jesus, where the Lord did send a visit to me with the shooting, I said, I haven't been to speak that, was the shooting of July 28th on the corner of Me and Rutgers. My son and his dad was working, I just walked over there to help them. Ooh, do a job. Ooh, hurry up, oh, come on, let me get out of here, let me get out of here. I went, I went to go get some Chinese food, but like, hurry, come back, what, the house was taped off due to a drive-by shooting, not without even the Lord was telling me, wow, hurry up and get my friends and family away from there. Well, like I said, I'm not crazy when I said the Lord lets me see things for a reason. But wow, like I said, until New Brunswick Police Department does their job, it's just too much happening in the city, and it's like they're being paid to sit on their rear end, but how many car accidents a day, how many shootings, but what? Nothing is being taken seriously, and why? Because you don't do your research. And it's very upsetting, due to where, like I said, none of you really took the time to believe what I said.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. Have a great evening. Mr. General, who's next?
Charlie Cradville. General, good evening. Good evening. Dr. Caldwell, members of the board, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, editor of New Brunswick Today. Start with a very important issue, I think, you know, last year due to the pandemic, families were given the option of doing virtual learning. It's my understanding the state has not yet authorized that kind of thing for this year. Does this board think that would be a good or positive thing if, you know, students and families had that option, at least for the beginning of the year? at least for the beginning of the year?
Can't speak for the whole board, Mr. Reddall.
Okay, does anybody on the board have thoughts on that? I think it's an important issue that hopefully will come to some kind of resolution before the school year starts.
Do you have any other questions?
Maybe the superintendent could tell us through your chair whether that's something New Brunswick wants?
Mr. Reddall, we're not sharing opinions up here at the meeting. We want to answer your questions if we can answer them.
Okay.
Or hear your statement.
Okay, just trying to have a dialogue on what I thought was an important issue. I'll move on to the Lincoln Annex construction site. Disappointed there was no facilities committee meeting. Disappointed there was no update on that. Through you, Mr. Chair, can Mr. Spencer tell us what work has been done on the site?
Do you have any comment, Mr. Spencer? No comment.
No comment on the construction of the promised new school. Can you tell me, has excavation been started or completed?
As I understand, progress is being made.
What kind of progress? What's been done?
This isn't the meeting. Please write a letter if you're interested. Please send the superintendent a letter if you have a request.
I took the time out of my day to come here and speak to the whole board about this. This is really important.
Well, Mr. Reddall, as I've said before, people who come before us, you should send a letter, if you have a question, you want a response, you've got to send a letter in advance and we will respond if we can. And by coming here and asking questions without prior letters is inappropriate, frankly.
Okay, well, we'll have to agree to disagree. I think most boards of education, you know, want members of the public to give them their thoughts and their input and their questions. And I believe just a minute ago, you were telling me, we'll try to answer your questions if you have them. There's a question. What was done at 50 Jersey Avenue? Because it looks the same as it did on May 12th when you held the groundbreaking. What's been done? You talk about progress. What progress has been done with the construction of the new school since that ceremonial groundbreaking?
We welcome your input. We will send a letter and we'll get back to you in a way we can.
Okay, I think that speaks volumes that you answered some questions from some members of the public. When I come here with a very simple question. You say there's progress. What do you mean by that? What progress has been done with the construction of the site? Has the soil that's contaminated been removed or excavated? I was told by the Middlesex County Improvement Authority that was supposed to take place in June and July. We're here in August. It does not appear that's been done. We have a facilities committee. We have the head of the facilities committee with us. Do any of the board members know what's been done there?
Charlie, as I said, we've answered your question about construction. Send a letter and we will...
That's not the answer to the question. You're telling me to ask the same question, except ask it in writing.
Yes. So you give the board time to respond. You're coming up here and asking questions, expecting people to respond, hoping that we'll make a mistake so you can write it in your little paper.
You don't know why I'm coming up here. I'm coming up here to ask, to see if this board knows anything about the construction project. This is a school construction project for this district, one that you touted, one that you spoke at the groundbreaking of. And then everybody laughed at the groundbreaking and nothing's been done since. The place looks exactly as it did that day. Meanwhile, the Lincoln Annex was destroyed. They're excavating that, they're getting that going quick. But the promised new school, the one that you said was such a good deal for us, got nothing to show for it. Not even a truck loaded dirt, no progress. The same little platform where you did the ceremonial thing with the shovels, still all there. Nothing to show for it. And nothing to say for it here. This is sad and shameful that not one member of this board can talk about the specific progress on the promised new school. You obviously don't know. You obviously haven't followed it. The facilities committee didn't meet. And you don't have the answer. So that's why you're kicking the can down the road, punting, and telling me to put my questions in writing because you came here unprepared. Don't act like I'm the one being inappropriate. You're entrusted to produce schools for the community and you're failing us miserably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reddall. Have a great evening. Are there any other, Mr. General, are there any other folks?
Now, that concludes the public portion of the meeting.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number 11, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Is there a second? Okay, roll call, Mr. General.
Ms. Ortiz. Mrs. Seeland. Mrs. Shikitis. Mrs. Solis. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Look at item number 12, the Finance Committee report. It has been presented. Is there a motion to accept the report? Is there a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Ms. Ortiz. Mrs. Seeland. Mrs. Shikitis. So noted. Mrs. Solis. Mr. Spencer. So noted. Ms. Sevilla. So noted. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Excellent. Item number 13, the resolutions for closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJ SA 10, comma, 4 to 6, provides that certain matters of your public body may be discussed in closed session. And whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows: Personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege. Now therefore being resolved, the aforementioned suffix shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff. And the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public where the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exists. Is there a motion? Second. Roll call, please, Mr. General.
Ms. Ortiz. Mrs. Seeland. Mrs. Shikitis. Mrs. Solis. Mr. Spencer. Ms. Sevilla. Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
We are in closed session.
Wonderful. And we're back from closed session. We're resuming public session. The Personnel Committee report. Mr. Benito Ortiz. Is he here? Senator Michelle. Waiting for you. You are the best. Okay, we will resume public session. The Personnel Committee report. Mr. Benito Ortiz. Chairperson.
Yes, the Personnel report. We met on Thursday. We have consensus on the Personnel report. I see a motion to accept the personnel report as amended.
Is there a motion, is there a second? Roll call, Mr. General.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Mrs. Seeland.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Sevilla.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Excellent. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Have a great evening, everyone, thank you.